Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of July 9th, 2019 at 6:00 at Memorial Town Hall. I'm calling the meeting to order. Selectman Jaworski is unable to attend this evening, so it's just Diana Zinal and myself. So the meeting's been called to order. Are there any announcements, Diana or Marlene? Public announcements?
Water Palooza event will be held on Saturday, July 20th in front of the library. It's at 9:30, 9 o'clock or 9:30.
Lots of fun.
Lots of water activities.
Water.
And then a little run walk around the circle.
I have two, actually I have two. So I just want to remind people that the box office for gala tickets is next week, the 17th and the 18th, from 5:30 to 7:30 in Town Hall. That's people's first crack at gala tickets. They will be released whole tables only on Wednesday night, and I'm pretty sure you can buy individual tickets on Thursday night.
And that's the gala for New Year's Eve.
That's the New Year's Eve kickoff gala. The tickets are $100 apiece. Lovely dinner at the log cabin, great entertainment, that sort of thing. There is more information on the website if people want it. And can I make a Booster Club announcement?
Sure.
So the Greater Hatfield Open will be, I think it's August 25th this year, and it's at Crumpin' Fox. So people looking for information could, maybe for you, I don't know. But anyway, so that should, you know, that's always a nice event, and that this year it will benefit both the Booster Club and Smith Academy Golf. So there'll be, I'm sure there's information online.
Great. Anything else?
Or people could contact me.
Sure. Or they could call the school.
Or they could call Matt Zaneri, the golf coach.
There you go. All right. Is there anything else, Diana or Marlene?
That's good.
From announcements? Is there anybody here tonight for public forum? All right. Doesn't appear to be. So we've got a couple sets of minutes. Two sets of minutes from June 25th. So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June 25th at 5:00. That's the Board of Selectmen meeting, regular meeting.
I will second that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have a Board of Selectmen Executive Session Meeting from the same night, June 25th. Make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you.
And those minutes remain?
Pardon?
The executive session ones are not released yet? Is that correct?
I think that is correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Kay. So under posted business, we have, topic one, we've got some requests from the 350th Steering Committee. In essence, there's a couple different things that they submitted all having to do with the size, the size of the committee. So they're looking to expand the size of the committee from nine members to 11 members. I think that's absolutely fine. I don't have a problem with it.
Well, I'm a member of the committee, and I support this move.
Sure.
I mean, it's a big job, and I think more people, and the people who are interested in coming on are really super additions.
I would agree. So we're going to move the number from nine to 11. Along those lines, there's currently eight active members. So there's a total of three members that we're looking to appoint tonight. So I'll make the motion to appoint Mike Cahill.
Don't we have to first maybe vote to increase the size of the committee?
Oh, we didn't do that?
No.
I thought we were on board. There a motion?
I'll make a motion to increase the size of the committee from nine to 11.
Second.
For 350th.
Right.
Well, Mike was filling the vacancy.
Any further discussion?
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Any further discussion?
No.
All right. Thank you, Diana. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I'll make a motion to appoint Mike Cahill to the 350th Steering Committee. It's actually to fill a vacancy from Lino Mastah. So I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes, thank you. And I will also make a motion to appoint Stephanie Slisch and Paul Labby as recommended by the members of the 350th Steering Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you to Paul and Stephanie as well.
Absolutely.
So I think we have a full complement now. Full staff at 11. Thank you all. Oh, good job, Anna.
Thank you very much.
Along those lines, and Diana just alluded to it, but, you know, there is a lot of activities taking place starting, a lot of activity taking place now, but everything's kicking off on New Year's Eve. So it's a lot of work and a lot of dedication from a lot of people. And I know that it's not just those 11 members while they're on the Steering Committee. They're looking for many volunteers to help with the various aspects that are taking place throughout the year.
There's, and there's a variety of different ways people could volunteer. So whatever you're comfortable with, you know, you should reach out to the committee. There's a website, there's other information on there, too, about being a sponsor, different events that we already have planned out. So I think it'd be great if people started sort of paying attention to that website and participating in whatever way they're comfortable. That'd be great.
I would agree. You know, it's, the planning started, you know, seven, eight, nine months ago.
Oh, a couple of years ago.
If not, not prior.
Yeah.
And then you think it kicks in because you have a year to go before it starts. And now, here it is, July, and the first event is in five months.
Right.
So it's all going to start happening quickly. So if you have any interest at all in any of the aspects of volunteering, please do so and get in touch with any of the members. Or, as Diana said, it's online. Mike?
One of Steph's primary focuses will be volunteerism.
Right.
And so she's going to put together a kind of a needs definition, and then is actively going to begin to develop a program to go out and solicit volunteers. So if anyone's interested in volunteering, just generally feel free to contact her, Steph Slisch. I don't know what her contact information is, but most people know Steph now.
Yep.
So she's going to be in touch.
Yeah, and she'll end up coordinating it all, and it'll be great.
Awesome.
It'll be really, really.
Thanks for that information, Mike. Okay. Anything else on the 350th?
No, just, I mentioned the tickets, and that's, that's the next big thing, selling the gala tickets.
Yes, it is.
And we do expect that gala to sell out. So people should not dilly-dally.
Topic number two, the conservation restriction for Straits Road. Marlene, was there something you wanted to mention?
So this, sorry, this is related to the property, and I think this is Mark Wamsley from Kestrel.
Hi, Mark. Nice to see you again.
So Mark certainly jump in if you'd like to.
Sure. No, this is exactly, this was an important part of the project, and it's particularly what the town voted to expend its CPA funds on, was the purchase of this conservation restriction on the land. So it's been approved by the state and all the parties involved in the Concom, so it's just awaiting your signature. The project, cross our fingers, you know, seems to be moving ahead. It has one final vote, special permit hearing for the Planning Board on the 16th, I believe. And then the closing will be between that and the 19th, you know, the PNS goes.
What does it need a special permit for?
Common driveway permit.
A driveway?
Common driveway, common driveway permit, shared driveway for three lots. Townspokes expressed an interest in, you know, if there has to be development on the small portion of the property, that it be on the Straits Road, or excuse me, that it be on the North Hatfield roadside and not on the Straits roadside. And in order to kind of make all the numbers work and fit three houses lots there, there'd be a common driveway. So it seems like everyone's behind it. So once that goes through, we should be pretty good to close.
That driveway would go about where that for sale sign is on North Hatfield Road, somewhere right there?
I believe so, yes. Yeah. I believe it is actually shown in the sketch plan, one of the final pages of the conservation restriction, so you can actually see how it works.
I didn't think there was a sketch plan.
Oh, the actual restriction we have here.
I think that I didn't get, so the original's in the signature folder.
Yep.
I think that those pages didn't print in your copy. Doesn't look like they're here.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't want to take up too much time, but I do want to look.
Oh, that's fine. I'm here to answer questions.
Yeah, we appreciate that. That really all fell into place, huh?
There's still a few hurdles to jump through.
Yeah.
Our goal's still, right now, if the state can get us the conservation restriction signed back in time, would be to do all the transactions on the same day.
Right.
If the state does not get us the CR back in time, which they don't guarantee, Kestrel might have to hold on to the property for a few more days, up to a week, before it's sold to Black Birch Vineyard.
Gotcha.
But it'd be great to just take it, you know.
Yeah, well, and the timing of, you know, when we go back and we look in the winter, when we were trying to beat the timelines and everything.
Yeah, I think everyone's on a grid.
It was all just falling in place, which was nice.
Yes, and it's, thanks, and no small part to all of your help in Hatfield.
Well, you know, this is a really beautiful area, and the way that this has worked, it's sort of, I think everybody's happy.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, we'll try and bring it home, then.
Great. So I know town meeting approved it, we approved it way back when, but, so we're looking for the official vote, then, Marlene?
The Board, yes. The Board needs to vote to approve the conservation restriction, and the town clerk is present to also notarize your signatures.
Got it.
I will make a motion that we vote to approve the conservation restriction as laid out in the boulders.
Second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Passes conservation restriction for Straits Road. So, Mark, thank you.
Might as well.
That would be wonderful.
Sure.
I'll put it in FedEx tomorrow morning, first thing.
Okay. Here you go, Lydia.
Those are your signatures right there, and you've signed that for the purposes stated therein on behalf of the town of Hatfield.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. You bet. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Mark. Thank you, you, too.
Thank you very much.
No, he's going to need the conservation. I gotta get up. Oh, sorry.
Okay. Did, all right. Well, so we had, the next topic on the agenda is to talk about the Town Hall Phase II renovations, the bid acceptance. But I do believe Marlene had some information that came out this afternoon, so we'll just wait for her to return. Marlene is here to just give us an update on topic number three, which is the Town Hall renovation bid.
So we're in the process of having the contract reviewed currently by Town Council. So I'd received the contract from the architect and, you know, between the two of us, working on that. Town Council has received it, and I'm hoping that we can schedule a very short meeting next week for the Board to just meet, to sign and approve the notice to proceed and the contract.
Okay. So we're basically holding off on this until our Town Council has reviewed it.
Correct. Right. That was the notice to proceed, but looking at the notice to proceed, you need to have the contract approved.
Sure. Okay.
Before you can sign that as well.
Makes sense. All right. So we will table that.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mike.
Notice to proceed to go out to bid, or?
No, notice to proceed to, that's to the contractor, to proceed with mobilization and prep work.
The work.
Prep work for construction.
So we have accepted a bid at this point?
The Board will be doing that. They will do that next week, the contract, and they'll award it.
Okay. But you can't proceed without accepting a bid, correct?
Right. Well, they have, right, they're accepting the low bidder. They're going to accept the low bidder. Bless you.
I'm just thinking about sequence, that's all.
Mm-hmm. They'll do it all at the same time. Accept it.
At your next meeting, you will accept?
They will award it to the low bidder, approve the contract, and also sign off on the notice to proceed.
Notice to proceed. Yeah. And by then, our attorney will have, you know, answered any questions that there may or may not be. Okay. Thank you. So the next topic is we're going to meet with the Finance Committee at 6:30. So why don't we go to topic number five, which is the fiscal year 20, the COLA rate approval?
Yes.
All right.
So you have all the new rates?
Yes.
For the fiscal year?
Yep.
In front of you, and generally, the Board of Selectmen approves those every year.
Okay.
Vote to set the rates. Yes.
So I will make a motion to accept these rates as presented, but I want to exclude firefighter training rate and firefighter hourly rate tonight because we don't have Ed here, and I have a conflict with approving those rates. So maybe we could just put those rates off to that next meeting. Will Ed be back?
Sure can.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Because I can't, I can't vote on those particular rates.
Nope.
So we'll exclude those and take up all the other ones.
All right. So I will second Diana's motion to accept these rates, other than the two that were identified until our next meeting. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Oh.
Are we just doing the 2% COLAs, or is there other people getting?
Yes. COLA, right.
Well, I believe that there's been some conversation that other departments were getting additional raises, so I just want clarification. Sorry.
I just wanted to clarify, make sure these were the COLAs that we had approved, because there's been some conversation around town that there's departments getting more than the 2% for their departments. So I want to make sure.
We just approved this rate that's on the sheet.
Yes, which is just the 2%, correct?
Yes. That is my understanding.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have previous rates and current, what's being proposed, so I'm...
Well, there were some letters that were presented to you that asked for just something different.
Oh, you have a copy of those.
I haven't seen that, but myself, but I am a taxpayer, I have a taxpayer hat on right now, not an employee one, that there's kind of a conversation in town about some departments getting more than others. So I just want to make sure that we're clear.
You're referring to the police department, because your office just received copies of those. You have those.
I'm not doing this as an employee right now, so my office may, Edwina may have got something, and I didn't.
Ooh, sorry.
I'm sharing a taxpayer right now, saying, I want to make sure that everybody in town is treated the same. So at this point, that's all that's being approved, is the COLAs, correct?
These are presented to us as just COLAs.
COLAs, okay.
COLAs.
So whatever was given to my office or not given to my office.
The rates reflected here for the police department reflect the increases that were approved for the police department.
Which is just the COLAs or more?
It's their, it's their new rate, based on what was presented to your office.
So when did that?
Within their, which was within their budget.
Within their budget, right. They have the money in their budget.
On camera and on record.
So I can't speak for the police chief.
No, I understand that, but I can speak as a taxpayer.
I don't know if that includes the 2% COLA as well.
I can speak as a taxpayer, that it was clearly stated that having additional money in your budget did not mean you could give more than the 2%. So I have concerns, because some departments have the ability to have extra money, and there are other departments that don't have that ability. And I don't think it's correct, I'm not, I wish we could pay everyone what they're supposed to get paid, but we're not in that situation right now. So if the Finance Committee directly said to all of us, we could not add more money to our budget to increase salaries, that department happens to have a budget that is much bigger and ends up having extra money, because they don't know if they're going to have an emergency or those kinds of things. So I don't think that it's appropriate to be giving that department more raises than the rest of the town is getting. And that was never voted on by you guys or by the Finance Committee.
Who made this rate sheet up? Where'd the rate sheet come from?
Don't know.
This, oh, this rate sheet.
This one.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the police. This is a spreadsheet that's on my computer that I update every year.
So are these, because there's no previous rate and current rate.
Exactly.
So there's no way for me, so what, is this rate just a COLA, or is there an additional increase?
Or a combination of whatever.
That, that rate represents the rates that were just approved, signed off on.
By?
By the Board of Selectmen, by the department head in the Board of Selectmen.
But when did it become?
They had...
Paul, when did it become okay to do that? Because we were told specifically...
When did we sign up?
You just voted before I could raise my hand, while I had my hand raised in the back of the room.
Yeah.
That you just voted, but you didn't even, you just thought you were doing a 2% COLA. That, those depart, that department's getting more than the 2% that everybody else is getting. Not saying they don't deserve it, because I'm not saying that at all. I just think we need to be consistent, because it's not, we already have enough not getting along in this town and concerns with it, that now we're pitting departments against each other, because they have a bigger department than other people. Because, to be honest, from the other departments that I know, this is as a taxpayer's saying this, there's no way other departments can do that, including my own department. And so I have concerns with you making, setting a precedence that department heads get to set, because you didn't discuss it, you just voted blindly, you didn't know.
Well, I assumed it was the COLA rate.
Oh, well, you did, yeah, that's true. You were in the process of voting.
You were in the process of the voting, but you presented that, and it says it on the agenda, that if this is a COLA increase, when some of those things on that sheet are not COLA increases.
Right. So when I put this together, the police positions are, have always been on this list.
Absolutely. I've helped you work on that sheet.
And based on what, not this sheet.
I have helped you in the past with that sheet, not this year.
The previous year.
Yes, the previous years I've helped you.
Go ahead, Marlene.
So the rates that are reflected under the police department are the recent rate changes that the police chief put through a week or two ago.
The reshuffling of funds that were within the...
That's right.
The police department's.
I'll chime in if I can. I kind of support, we're, understand where Sharon's coming from. And, I mean, I think the question is, are the new rates being set on that sheet for the police department? 2% increases only, or do they involve more than 2% and other kinds of increases?
I can't speak for the police chief. I would expect that there is a 2% COLA in there.
But there may be more.
Right. In addition to the 2%.
So this was presented to us, because there is no previous rate and new rate.
Right.
And it was presented as a COLA, my understanding of the vote we just took was that it was just a COLA.
COLA, that's right.
And that sheet always in the past had the previous rate.
It does, and I just, it's gotten so large, it's expanded.
Yeah. It wasn't any intention.
So did we actually take a final vote?
We did.
So maybe we need to change that, and maybe we need to get more information.
I'm not trying to be inconsiderate. That's not my issue at all. I'm just trying to be fair, that this was kind of, as it states, on your agenda, it's a 2% COLA. This is the first that I, maybe you've had a conversation with Edwina, she's the treasure collector, I'm only the assistant, so I don't need to be privy to everything, but this is the first I heard about it from a towns person, not from a employee, that a department head was doing this. It got discussed, a department head last week, that it was a possibility that a different, an additional department wants to do this. Several want to do it now. So now we're setting ourselves up that all these departments are going to start to do this.
Why not?
Well, all departments aren't going to do that, because they don't have the money.
Because we need to have information about what's really in these.
The Council on Aging talked about doing it, I know the Fire Department's talked about doing it, and now the Police Department's talked about doing it. Last year, Stephen came before this Board and before the Finance Committee, and was, and Michael, and was told, you cannot do this, even if you have extra money, you can't set your rates. I don't get to make that decision, you guys do. I can just say, I'm not sure that this is wise, because it's going to cost...
I mean, I can tell you that in the past, there have been times when department, different departments have gotten different raises at different times, and it was to make things fair and keep our wages competitive.
None of our wages are competitive.
So sometimes, I understand that, and I, this is part of a much larger discussion that we need to have at some time. I would like to reconsider the vote, only because this was presented as a COLA. And so I want to, you know, so maybe we should...
So if you want to rescind your vote, and I will expand the chart and talk with the police chief and have all that information for the Board's next meeting.
I would appreciate that.
Do you want to hold off on all of it, or approve all the other ones, not fire hourly and not police? I mean, if we're doing it next week, why don't we just do them all at once?
That's what I would, that's what I would suggest, do it all at once.
Okay.
Just to make sure everything's...
So we need to vote on that rescind?
Yes, so there's been, there's been a motion to rescind the vote. I'll second it. Right?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So will that affect the next payroll?
When are they meeting next week? I don't know.
We're not meeting next week, we're meeting in two weeks.
Oh, I thought it was next week.
Will the old rates for 19 stay?
They would have to stay, and then they would be, I would assume, granted retroactively.
Going to be retroactive?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think any other department on there did more than a 2%, but I can't be sure of that either, so, sorry. It means a lot more work for us, too, to do retro, but I just think it needs to be fair.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
All right.
Sorry.
So, pick that up. So, we did have some unanticipated new business that can't wait, to the time sensitive nature. It has to do with the town meeting approval of the ambulance and the school department van. And town meeting voted for it, but the select board has to, to sign off on a resolution for each of those. They're two separate agreements. So.
No, I was just, I was, I was ready to make a motion. Go ahead, keep going.
No, no, your honor, you'd go.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the lease with option to purchase. This is for the 2012 plus two passenger rear lift school bus, rear lift school bus.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we've got the ambulances.
And then I'll make a motion that we enter into the lease with option to purchase agreement for the 2019 Horton six oh three four by four ambulance.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. And we'll have to sign those for Lydia after our meeting. So it is six thirty, we're going to take a little break, and when we come back, we'll be meeting with the finance committee to talk about the 2019 budget transfers. We're just waiting for a few more members to come in, and our, our agenda is complete. Okay, we're back. Thank you, John. Our friends from the finance committee are here. And before we start talking about transfers and where we stand with 2019 budget transfers, we are going to take a vote on a topic that we just talked about a few minutes ago, which was rather than hold up the approved COLA increases for all employees, because there's a question with a particular department, we're going to move forward so that everybody gets the two percent increase at least, which was voted upon and agreed upon. And then we'll talk about the, the other, the other question later.
So we're going to go back and take that vote. So I, I will make a motion that we grant two percent COLAs
Yes.
to all the employees listed here and are by department, with the exception, tonight we cannot vote on firefighter training rate and firefighter hourly rate, and that's because I have a conflict, because my son is on the department. But all of the other ones will be taken up and given two percent. And any other increases will be addressed at another time.
Perfect. And I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Okay. Third time's a charm.
I know.
All right.
It was so much fun the first two times.
Back where we started, sort of. Okay. So what we, what we have today from our accounting office is the balances in all the various departments in town. And this is, you know, the fiscal year ends on June thirtieth, but there's always, well, there's normally billing that comes in beyond then for things that were purchased or, or time that was done. And by the time bills come in, or payroll, or what have you, it's actually in July, but it's for things that happened the previous fiscal year. So that's what our conversation's going to be with tonight, to go through some of these and decide the best way to handle them. With that, Daryl, I don't know, or Marlene, do you want to just sort of figure out what's going on, so?
You, you all have a spreadsheet in front of you.
Yes, we did just get this, by the way.
Yes, we did, this afternoon.
Late this afternoon, so, but we're all, we're all in the same boat.
And the departments listed reflect whether there's a deficit or a surplus? And where you see a surplus, we're, we're using funds to cover the transfers, so the.
So let's go through some of the deficits to start with. And so, I mean, the moderator, that's not, not an issue. That's one dollar. Yeah.
Now, what happened with that dollar?
Just a quick question for you guys. Marlene, what are, what is the date of this report that you're talking?
I received it today.
Okay, and, and are there any other outstanding?
This is all fiscal year nineteen, we're, we're taking up year end transfers for fiscal year nineteen.
Are there any other outstanding invoices that you're aware of that might be coming in that would be booked to fiscal nineteen?
Not that I'm aware of, not that I've been made aware of, or.
Five working days or six working days after the close of our fiscal year, everything's, our books are closed. That's what you're saying.
No, I'm not saying the books are closed. No, these are, these are shortfalls that we are aware of, and we have until July fifteenth to take care of those shortfalls.
And you wouldn't want to wait until July fifteenth in case other stragglers come in?
Well.
Well, you can encumber funds, right?
You can, right.
These are different.
This is something we do every year.
I know, no, no, I know, I understand, but I'm just saying, there's another week yet before July fifteenth.
But it appears we have a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars left over. So hopefully, we can pay a few more bills.
All I'm saying is that, you know.
And I'm sure there are.
There may be additional expenses.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm sure there are expenses that departments have, have to pay, and they will encumber those funds. We still have actually one more warrant, which we're processing, and the last warrant will be dated July nineteenth.
Right.
But if the money's in the budget, we don't have to do anything.
Right.
Well, no, but there's, but there's. Right, but some, my point is that there, there could be, I don't know what the possibility is, but there could be.
The accountant at this point should have a pretty good idea of where the shortfall's going to be. I'd be, I mean, and you're right, something might come up in the next six days, but.
And you'll have to.
And that has.
Whether to re-vote or to have to vote.
And it happened last year.
Well, but if you have a hundred, if you have a hundred and twenty seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars left, presumably that's scattered throughout a bunch of budgets currently. So not only would you have to have new bills that came in, but they would have to fall in a department where that money wasn't there. So, I mean, it's possible that that can happen, but.
It's just part of the year end process. It happens every year.
If we had to, we could, we could transfer it July fourteenth, I guess.
They're wrong.
We absolutely had.
Right.
Okay. Meet again in a week to have to pick up something else that was deficit.
Well, thank you.
Well, I think all the departments do their best.
So moderator, town administrator, we were short.
That's a combination salaries and expenses.
Is that some of that base state?
Yes, it is.
Is that the base state? Just.
And salaries?
And salaries.
What salaries?
So that would be the administrative staff, that's town administrator and administrative staff salaries. And there was an increase, and I've addressed this previously, and we still need to, to cover that, but there was an increase for the administrative staff a couple of years ago. We hired a replacement for the executive assistant, and look, we restructured the job description, increased the, the rate. That particular year, we had the funds available because there was an absence in that position for several weeks.
Then we level funded.
Then we level funded, and we've been level funding, and so I have.
Now we have to go back. Okay, thank you.
Someday we'll have to fix that.
Yes.
Yeah, we should fix that. So then the next, then, then the accountant line is in deficit forty nine thousand, and that again is base, that's base state. So, and we more or less anticipated those. And then all these others are positives. I don't know, this election thing is up again. Oh my gosh, what are we going to do with you, Lydia?
I, well, I sent him, we already voted on the transfers. I sent him the information on what was transferred where.
I'm just kidding.
He should have plugged it in. I shouldn't be in the deficit.
So it's eighteen hundred dollars for elections that we were well aware of coming forward. Inspection services, there's a little bit, is that, that's salaries, is that correct, or?
Which line are you in?
Inspection services.
Yes, that is salaries.
Okay. Public works.
Where are we? What line?
Four twenty one.
That's expenses, public works administration, that is expenses.
You're right, though, on inspection services, you're bringing in revenue.
Yes.
That offsets the salaries, otherwise the salaries wouldn't be paying.
Right.
Public works administration. So what, do we know what those were, the forty five hundred dollars?
Is it under DPW administration?
Four twenty one.
Okay, so I have to sit down again with base state, they're coming in. We went through the public buildings and cleared everything up because there's something still mischarged in Adicon.
Okay.
That shouldn't be in there. So that might affect another, another division.
Okay.
So did you get a recent report from them? Because right now, it's showing a deficit.
No, that was the only one that Mary was going to wait till she came again here.
So, just so I'm clear, Phil, so that amount of money, the forty four, the forty four hundred. Yeah, I was going to say, so the forty, so it could be that that, not that there's a shortfall or an overage, but that amount of money might, should maybe be in another line, is what you're saying. Thank you.
So, all right, so my wee little brain doesn't work very well, so you've got the balance. And then what is the next thing? Additional expense?
Those are anticipated expenses.
Additionally.
Mm-hmm.
And then projected ending would be the total projected end, okay.
Right.
Okay, sorry. Little bit slow. Snow and ice. Didn't we?
So as Justin had.
I thought we took care of snow and ice.
You did for the previous year.
Yeah, I thought, no, I thought we took care of this year's snow and ice.
Nineteen?
That was part of what we did. Justin wanted to take care of it.
Oh, we had an article on the warrant, the town meeting warrant, but the selectman, selectman voted to take that off. Yeah. The, the article was, was removed from the warrant.
Huh? No, it wasn't.
Correct?
I don't recall.
I thought the only show on ice pass was for eighteen.
There, there was an article on the town meeting, on the draft.
Did we say, when we were going through our budgets next door, did we say that, that ninety thousand, since we're able to carry it over?
Voted to take it up and put it on the recap.
Did we vote to carry it over?
On the recap.
To put it on the.
Because.
But this gives us.
We knew, we knew we were going to have to pay it, but it, it didn't at the time, because we didn't have ultimately the amount of money that we ended up with at the time we were putting the budget together.
So, but this would give us another opportunity if we have the money to take care of it now.
Not all of it, though. Justin is just recommending taking care of twenty three thousand of it. So if you look at, you'll see twenty three thousand.
Why?
In the reserve fund transfer, and then it would still leave you a deficit of forty nine thousand seven ninety five.
Yeah, I don't know why we pick a court twenty five.
He said it's just.
Go ahead, Sean, Sean had an answer.
He's just recommending to help reduce it.
Rip all the other accounts down to zero without knowing, with, with another warrant out to pay, and without knowing every penny that's going to come in out.
Right.
Okay, there was nothing on the warrant for snow and ice.
No, there wasn't.
All right, and I think, you're right. I think, Brian, you guys, we voted, we voted to just carry it to the recap. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Marlene, for the reminder.
And then, so the next facilities maintenance is a little bit, that's thirteen hundred dollars. Library, two thousand dollars. Oh, transfer station, we're less than a thousand dollars. What's that?
How do we get a shortfall at the library?
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand the shortfall at the library either. Okay.
I can't remember.
So debt service, there is, we're, we're okay with debt service? Edwina? Okay. Health insurance, we're okay. Okay. And so, so those were the deficits that we're aware of right now, although. So, the yellow, the transfer out.
Right, agrees with what you're, you're covering for expenses.
And then the transfer in is a hundred and, so we're, so we've got a hundred and two thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars of deficit that we need to take care of. And we have taken care of it by.
One twenty two, one forty five, one fifty one, you know, all these. One eighty, one ninety five, two ten, two twenty.
Transfer out, yeah, that's the transfer.
The transfer out.
So we took some from police, fire, town.
Fuel.
Fuel.
Mechanic motor pool, and.
Legal, five thousand from legal.
And forty thousand from health insurance?
Yeah, because the participation varies, you know, who's here and who leaves. If they leave, we save money.
Okay.
Or if somebody comes and doesn't take the insurance, fewer people.
And so. And then they, and then, so essentially, the finance, our, our account, which has twenty three thousand dollars, that's what Justin is saying, take ours and apply it to snow and ice.
Correct.
Okay, so maybe Phil can help us with this. So Phil, in the FY nineteen, snow and ice deficit budget, we had sixty three thousand seven hundred ninety two dollars and eighty five cents that we addressed in this most recent budget. I mean, that's what Justin wrote. So now we have another, or is that, does that add up?
Close.
No, it's higher. Wait. What's forty nine and sixteen?
Sixty five.
Sixty five. I guess it's close. I just don't, I, I'm just, you know, I try to keep track of these things. So, I remember way back, we talked about having a ninety thousand dollar snow and ice deficit. It looks like we took care of about sixty four thousand of it. Does that sound right to you? I'm just wondering why there's that much left. I mean, we have eighty, because here what it says is the ninety thousand you had talked about originally.
Yeah, which was just an estimate. So you're saying that the deficit was one twenty?
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
Are we all in the, is it all in the same year?
Well, what, Sean? The snow and ice deficit is listed there. Is that the twenty eighteen deficit?
That's probably the twenty eighteen.
Okay, and then look at the next column over.
Is that the workbook?
Yes.
The budget workbook?
Oh, yeah, goes, goes eight, oh, yeah, sixty three, yeah, it says nineteen.
Yeah, when, when is this from, though?
Right, I was just going to say that, that.
It was the most recent one.
Right, when we were developing the budget workbook, that's probably the number we were looking at, at that time.
But that's the most recent one.
So that's from April.
That's what we went to town meeting with.
That's what we went to town meeting with, yeah.
So that would have been in May.
I'm not concerned, I'm just trying to understand.
So now we're eighty nine or something like that, right?
Yeah, so, right, so we have eighty nine here, and Justin is suggesting we make up a little bit of it, leaving us with fifty thousand dollars of snow and ice for the next budget.
Right.
So I'm going to write that down. We should have.
Which would, yeah, which is.
Better than normal.
Which is significantly less than what we dealt with this year.
Okay, so fifty thousand snow and ice left to be addressed in FY twenty.
Right, so what we'll do, apply that to the recap sheet.
Okay.
And that would come off our free cash.
Recast.
To, okay, thank you.
But theoretically, that.
It's on the cherry sheet, it's on free cash.
Well.
Even on the cherry sheet, it's got to come from somewhere.
Yeah, it's a reduced, it's a reduced.
It's a reduction of your.
It's a reduction of your, your free cash.
That's fine. Okay. All right, can I have my budget back? I treasure it. I read it at night. Thank you. Okay.
So. I mean, I guess I'm okay with approving these, but I guess I'd like some clarification from Justin on the snow and ice thing.
Yeah, no, I think it's fine. I just want to make sure that I understand.
Yeah.
So when we have this conversation again next year, I'll know when it started.
I mean, theoretically, theoretically, you're not really even doing anything. You're just pushing it out to next year.
Right.
Right.
Because the money that you would take from the hundred and twenty seven, right, the.
Fifty grand.
Right, so the money you would take for the one twenty seven to pay the fifty, instead of doing it today, you're going to do it the next fiscal year. Because the one twenty seven is theoretically going to go to free cash.
That's right.
Next year.
Right.
So you're really just pushing it down the road till next year, when you have more information.
That's fine.
About.
Right.
Okay.
And we might as well take the twenty three thousand out of our reserve fund.
Right, which we're not, yeah.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's just going to fall to free cash.
It's already been appropriated.
Right.
Okay. And we don't know what the library twenty two hundred dollars is?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't.
It would just be interesting to know, particularly whether it's salary or expense.
Yeah.
It's not a huge amount of money, but just relative to the budget.
They're not usually one step.
Well, right, what's the, I'd just be curious, like, what's the surprise expense that happens?
Right.
Were there any repairs that we had to do that you could, in a year, I mean, you know?
Yeah, right, I mean, that could happen, I just don't.
Right.
And some of that stuff would go through public building maintenance, right, if it was? No, they do it all? Okay.
When was that roofing? That was two years ago, right, or three years ago, when we had to have that?
Although we've finally gotten down, they talk to you about stuff they're doing, so, so, so we're, we're, we're getting there. Yeah, that's good. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the transfers pretty much as presented. Is that correct?
Yes. I make a motion that we make these transfers as presented on, we should have a name for this document.
End of year transfers.
End of year transfer document dated July ninth.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Want a second? I have a second minute.
Okay, any other discussion about it? I guess the only discussion I would just, it would be good if we could just get some clarification on some of this, some of the questions we have, but.
Okay.
Particularly the, the difference in the snow and ice from May, the sixty, sixty three.
And possibly the misposting in the.
Yeah.
Right, I wrote that down. There's something being mischarged to line four twenty one.
Right, yeah, your line, getting that.
And just for your information, the library is, even in the FY twenty budget, off by, or increasing by twenty one hundred dollars. So there's some twenty one hundred dollar expense.
Well, it always increases by twenty, I mean, not always by twenty one hundred dollars, but always roughly by that amount because of the grant.
Yeah.
That we get from the state.
Maybe, maybe that's what it was. Maybe the grant came in, never, the grant didn't come in.
No, because that wouldn't have, doesn't appear, yeah, you don't know about that. I mean, the grant.
I don't know.
The grant is kept separately.
Yeah.
All right. I wrote it down.
Okay. So.
You only, you only other suggestion I'd make for the future would just be that in the past, and I guess I'm not commenting on the recent past, because I don't remember as well, but in, in the past, we used to look at the whole budget to do this. So like, just looking at this, I don't have any idea what's going on in all the other line items.
Okay, so what have you received in the past?
In the past, you know, we would sit down and make a list, right, or you would make a list, and then we'd go over the budget, and we'd, but, so I don't know that all, so like, when it comes to transfer out, right? So these are lines that have a surplus that we've selected to transfer out.
Right.
What other lines have a surplus?
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
We don't know that.
I was just going to ask, what is the bottom line? What is the total surplus?
Hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
So there's other lines that have a surplus. We don't know what they are.
Right.
And in the past, we used to kind of work through this, or at least know, you know, and I have no problem with getting suggestions on what are good options to use, but like, just to kind of do it without knowing anything else that's going on, or why.
Right.
Is.
Okay.
Well, it's also helpful information for you guys when you start this process all over again in a couple of months. And if you know that a certain department's line items was, you know, came in under budget in fiscal nineteen.
We might want to ask.
Yeah.
I, I believe that, I'm not to speak for Justin, and he's not here, but I know Marlene had, had told Bay State Accounting that we were having this meeting, and we needed to get rolling on some transfers. So to Sean's point, I would imagine that when all is said and done, over the next week or two, we're going to get the final spreadsheet, or, you know, the final workbook that's going to have all the, all the departments in it. But I agree, it would be nice to see it here, too.
Is every line actually here?
Every, every budget line item is here, it's just combined salaries.
I was just going to say, but, yeah, it's combined.
It's not broken down.
What we're, what we're accustomed working with is the wages and expenses itemized, right? But every, every budget line.
Well, right, because that makes a, that sort of makes a difference in terms of whether you want to even ask. Well, right, because that makes, that sort of makes a difference in terms of whether you want to even ask a question.
Right.
Like, if you know it's salary, then I know what happened, you know? Like, if it's expense, then it's kind of hard to say what happened.
Well, and I think for the library, not to pick on the library, but I mean, that's a good example.
But it is helpful.
What's 20, you know, what was the, what makes up that $2,200?
Right, if you overspent your salary line by $2,200, that could be an issue.
Yeah, or was there some sort of...
Or did something happen?
Right, yeah, that's all.
You like to see the detail, where that is originating.
Yeah, exactly. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those that approve the motion as, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same name, motion carries. Now you guys get to do it.
So I will make a motion that we make the recommended transfers as outlined in this document.
I'll second that, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Thanks, Daryl.
Okay, and we have one more, what is this, we have to do, do requests for transfer from the reserve fund?
Right, that's for fiscal year 20, insurance is already in deficit, or looking at a deficit if those were put through.
20 is in deficit?
Fiscal year 20 insurance budget, we had discussed that, so the appropriation was $140,000, and we're looking at $174,000 for workers' comp, property and casualty, and police and fire accident coverage. These are the premiums, that's just the premiums, that, we obviously don't have any money to cover any claims that come in, where we have a deductible.
This is for our current budget that we just started.
It's nine days old.
Yeah, but you pay, I mean, we must pay forward all the whole bill, right?
Sorry, I'm just wrapping my brain around this.
And the property and casualty and workers' comp is at a discounted rate because we're going to pay it before, I think it's July 15th.
So that must, so that's just a premium increase, that significant?
Those are premiums, well, we've had some claims.
Well, workers' comp is always that done...
That's based on payroll.
Workers' comp is based on a payroll audit. So when they give you the estimate in the prior year, they have not yet done the audit.
That's correct, so this is an estimate.
And oddly enough, the audit almost always comes out that you...
Last year, we had an additional premium.
Right.
You probably always...
Following the payroll audit.
So what's being requested is $16,576, right?
I need an additional $16,000.
And it has to come out of finance reserve?
Here it says $16,576. Okay. Original appropriation was $140,000, this is an insurance budget.
I've already paid the police and fire accident, which was $18,000.
Right. Present balance is $121,756.
Correct, so that's not enough to cover.
The amount requested will be used for property and casualty, as Marlene has explained.
So I'll use that balance plus the $16,000 that I'm requesting to pay the workers' comp and the property and casualty.
Okay.
So what's the total amount? 32, right?
$16,576.
Coming out of finance reserve.
Plus $140,000, so 156,000.
When you guys made your motion, I wanted to make sure it was the...
The total due is 156.
156, 576 would seem to be the total due for all the insurance.
Got it, thank you.
Not including any claims, which if there are claims, will come back to us for more money.
So I have to start a new sheet for finance reserve and take that one off the top.
Is there a motion from the finance committee to do this?
We'll move to transfer.
Sadly.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Any further discussion? None, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, motion carries.
Quick question. We didn't know what these premiums were going to be three weeks ago, when we set the budget.
Well, I had actually requested, my requested budget was greater, but we went back and forth. The finance committee and board of selectmen had discussions about, you know, where we could increase, but we did anticipate that there would be a problem with the insurance line. Because there was during the, over the course of this year 19.
There is every year.
Okay, I got to write that down.
All right.
Anything else?
Anything else that you need us for?
Yes. And we don't have to make any determinations right now, but we do need to, as we've spoken in the past over the next few months, start, if we could, getting together to talk about sewer, water and sewer raids, capital projects, health insurance.
Big picture.
Big picture stuff.
Big picture.
As we get moving.
Actually, our plans, we were going to just take a few minutes...
And make a list.